Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing in the nation under God, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Would you learn kindergarten, every kind of need that goes with your life?
What's she doing, singing now?
No.
I always want to say that after we do the compliance.
All right, since we need to move along, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the article for the special town meeting, so I'm going to read what we have. All right, Article one, choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Article two, to see if the town will vote to finance the purchase of a new six-wheel dump truck with hydraulics, front power angle plow, wing plow, and all-season, six-to-eight-yard dump body at a final price not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, including finance costs, and to take an amount not to exceed five thousand out of surplus for a down payment that will ensure delivery and be utilized towards the first payment. That's the article.
I make a motion that we set the article.
I'll talk about it.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, I'm going to make a motion that the select board recommend yes. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, any signatures on that? Now we have two appointments to the finance committee, so I am going to make a motion that we appoint Jacqueline Child to the finance committee effective March second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
They didn't have an expiration date on that appointment?
Um, yeah, actually there is, sorry. March second, twenty twenty, and this is to finish out somebody's term, so it'll go until June thirtieth, twenty twenty. All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, and we have another appointment to the finance committee. I make a motion that we appoint Michael Arsino to the finance committee effective March second, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I know it's from the book. I'm going to table the discussion for the benefit package until next meeting, but I do need to know what we want to do with the health insurance portion under the town garage. Should we put the full amount in where it's an election year in case Brad doesn't win? So that we're not coming back to pay for the insurance?
It's not a given anyway.
Okay, so we can leave anything?
We can.
Okay. Okay.
But if we're going to discuss it at the next meeting, that's fine, but there's nothing in the, since the road commissioner and the clerk aren't covered by the personnel policy, and we have clarification on that now, there's not a policy in place that automatically guarantees the road commissioner to either a wage or benefit package. I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem discussing it, I just think that we need to know that there's no man, no mandatory requirement, no statutory requirement.
All right, well, then we'll leave it as is for now, and then I'm going to have to come up with something else. We've got to have something, I try people ask, and I don't know what to say.
Either way, we need to discuss it because currently the payment has been five thousand dollars.
Right.
But once the three-year term is over, then all the benefits are up for discussion.
All right, we're going to have to hash that out. Oops, sorry. Since you're here, do you want to do a report out or do you have anything?
Anybody have any questions about the truck itself?
It has four tires.
I'm sorry.
It's got four tires, it's got a lot of roads. Oh, shit! Oh, that's why I thought the six-wheel. It's been that tires a day.
I, I, I have a question, because I don't know if it's for Brad or for us. Is the...
I hope it's for Brad.
Is the article that we just passed descriptive enough for the ordering of the truck? Is it identical to the warrant article in June? In other words, I didn't, when I reviewed the warrant article that's being presented for this special town meeting, I didn't notice that it said sanding equipment. And should it say sanding equipment or is it all?
It's, it's part of the all-season body.
So, so it would be included?
Right, it's an integral part of the dump body system.
Okay, because in the article for June, it specifically says sanding.
Yeah, it doesn't have a separate spreader like the old style. Just like the twenty-eleven, it has the integrated body, which is all part of the sanding system, all-season body system.
Okay, and the other question I have is in comparing the June article to the one that's being presented, you were asking, I think, for one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand or one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, and this is for one-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
Right.
And, and why is there a reduction in cost?
I have no idea where the one-seventy-six came from, to be honest with you.
Okay, all right.
I, I mean...
It's just comparing one to the other.
Right.
And there's conversations...
I always had the ballpark price of one-sixty-five to one-sixty-eight, because that's what I was given basically by the dealerships. They said that's where it would be, when we actually get down to the brass tacks and put down our paper what we wanted as opposed to what we didn't want. And now we're down to one-fifty-one, five-fifty, I believe it is.
And I have another question.
Yes.
In the June warrant article, it says previously approved truck. I think to clear up any misunderstanding in the community, it should again refer to the nineteen-ninety-seven or nine, whatever truck it is that we're playing, because there's some concern about the board approving two trucks, not just one. So, I just, just, I just want to be clear, and I want it to be on the record, that it's all the same truck that's being...
Right, it's the one truck to replace the nineteen-eight-seven international that is now has a blown motor.
Okay, so that's, that's, I, I would like clarification on the warrant for June to say...
Sure, absolutely.
Can we hammer that out now, because the finance committee isn't going to be voting on that tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Because right, okay, so right now, it says to see if the town will vote to finance the previously authorized new dump truck with the hydraulics, front power, angle plow, wing plow, and all-season, sixty-eight yard dump truck body at a cost not to exceed the one-hundred-and-seventy-six. Okay, so now, if it's already been approved, we're just looking to make the remainder of the first payment. So we should completely reword that?
Mm-hmm.
And it should say...
And it should say town meeting on such, such a date.
The other thing is the, the, when Deb and I had talked about the financing from Bangor Savings, which was at two-point-five percent, she had given them a price of one-sixty-five.
And that's where...
And that's where the eighty-five-hundred dollars came from.
Right, yeah.
So at one-fifty-one-five, we're going to be considerably less on our finance charge.
And that's three years, right?
Yes.
I think it should say previously approved on, at a special town meeting date. So there isn't confusion? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the first payment.
And actually, we're not financing it for three years, we're only financing it for two, because we're talking about raising and appropriating the first payment.
Right, so your finance charges have even left. And the truck, you're not going to pay anything for the truck until it arrives.
Right.
Other than that down payment.
Right.
And that truck, I'm not going to, I'd be shocked if the truck is here by mid-August or September.
Yeah, that's what...
That would be, my guess would be September. So you won't even be making a payment until September, which would be reduced to finance charges further.
Yeah, what make and model, Brad?
Uh, it's international. But it does not have an international motor, including a Cummins motor. I did deal a couple of copies of the Porsche back.
All right, so how are we going to word this?
Are you putting it for transmission?
Do you have, do you have a suggestion, John?
Yeah, I think you're on the right track. If the town votes and raises appropriate, a number.
Yeah.
As a first payment, as a first of three payments for an international motor. Yeah, did, did your article for the upcoming meeting include the finance piece?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all you need in that annual meeting is raise appropriate, whatever number, first of three payments.
First of three payments for the previously voted on, no?
No, no.
For the purchase of, yeah, but then it makes it sound like we're giving another one. For the first of three payments of...
That would have proved on...
We have authorized new dump truck approved at a special town meeting on, I do think we have to have something about already been approved, or it's going to look like we're trying to get to. Yeah, previously approved, but... Previously approved at the first of three payments. Meeting, I feel, but... Because if I didn't go to the special town meeting as a citizen, then I'd want to know, well, what is this, who approved this? Well, it's my fault I didn't go to the town. Well, then you know what, if we're going to have, we can't, then you're not going to be able to vote on that part of the article tomorrow night, because we're not going to know if it gets approved, we're not going to know until after the special town meeting. So Article twelve, you're not going to be able to vote on. Everything else you can, about that one, you won't have time to, maybe just won't have it ready. You have to wait.
I have two Sanders down there, both stainless steel, that we're never going to use again, and I'd like to put them out to, to bid, have somebody, people, somebody buy them. Have the equipment, to have the money go into that equipment account again, if that's available.
We'll have to...
One of them's been there, well, the other one came out of the ninety-nine, which we no longer have, and there's no use for it, we have. The other one's been sitting there long before I got here, but they're not doing us any good, it's going to work money.
We don't have a problem with you selling it, we have to look at the, was, is the article that's in June's warrant the same as was in last year's? If it is, then there's no problem with your advertising and selling it and having any, any residual income put back in the, in the budget.
Okay.
If the warrant article wasn't passed last year, then it goes into surplus.
It was passed last year.
Then, then there's no problem.
I don't need to bring those two pieces forward to the, okay.
I don't believe so.
Now, what are the crew, you're all set?
Just salvage all scrap metal, that one you're talking about?
Yeah.
No, there was a...
There was one for equipment.
There was one for equipment, because we got that other. I don't even remember what we got.
It was in last year's warrant.
I don't think it's something, no.
The carbon issue.
No.
Or was that the previous year?
It don't have to be, I don't think.
Yes, it does.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
It's in this year's budget.
I know it was in last year's too.
It was in last year's too. Can I have that?
This one is, this one just says is scrapped.
We ended up paying the bond or the flail board, something like that. Right, it was from the sale of the ninety-eight.
Well, the article that was approved last year is probably the same thing that's there, to see if the town will vote to approve the road department to sell the junk scrap metal resulting from repairs to town equipment. The proceeds will be received and received into the clerk's office and will be used to replace broken tools or to purchase tools needed for the road department at the discretion of the road commissioner.
Yeah, I don't think that covers that. That's what's in this year's. Wasn't there a process that we had to go through to put things out to bid?
Yeah, I'm looking for something else here.
Right, we did advertise, not the junk, but the things that sold, plus the ninety, uh, nineteen-ninety-seven will have to be...
And if you did spend that money, it was held over, right?
Right, it rolled over to that equipment account.
Rolled over to that equipment account, right.
I don't see a red.
No, I don't see it, I don't know.
It's Article eighteen from last year's.
Rachel. Yes, sir. So tomorrow night, the finance committee will not be able to make a recommendation on this article in the special? No, not the special town meeting, you can go ahead with that one, it's Article twelve that's going to correspond, it's going to have to come from what happens with that article, that's why. Also, tomorrow night, do you want to make a recommendation? On Article twelve, that's it. Tomorrow night we can, but if we have another meeting and it's, the article is ready, then we can make a recommendation on it. It's just tomorrow night we can. Correct. Okay, I want to be sure about that. Yeah, it's just the wording's not correct in Article twelve and what you have, and we're not really going to be able to correct it that quickly, because we're going to have to contact the bank to find out on a lesser amount what the payments are going to be, so the numbers are going to change. So we're just getting for tomorrow night? Yeah, just get Article twelve. And we'll probably have it at least on a, on a meeting. That's what I'm figuring, you know? But we can't... Yeah. Support you. Yeah. I think we're, this is probably Brad last week too. She added up the total on the, on the quote, the sales order, and they come up tomorrow and her business has...
Yeah, this one, how it came to one-fifty-one.
Less the deposit.
Oh, okay.
Five-thousand-dollar deposit. I don't know, I'm just, I haven't... It might not be, but she's just, she's just guessing.
Yeah, I'm just, it's an assumption of...
So what do you do, if the voters say yes to the special town meeting, and then you go before the, the meeting in June, right? And they vote, and then they vote no?
Oh, it's the same situation we did when we bill him with the backhoe, or the, when we were paying on the chipper, it's the same situation.
Well, the chipper was all written out exactly, not, it should have been written out, exactly what the, right down to the penny, and what the payments were. First payment, second payment, third payment, fourth. It wasn't leaving doubt in anybody's mind that this is exactly what is going to happen in the way that this article is written, and then having another one in June. I don't know what to think of that, I've never actually seen anything like that. And if another one, you know, the last time it wasn't put out here about the special town, and, and don't say it was, because I went around to check, right? And, and we, is this going to be in the newspaper and all that?
It'll be posted, Martha, but you're, you're doing a pretty good job advertising it yourself.
I am.
Yeah.
It's not up to me, it's up to you, you, I elected you to represent me. Not the other way around.
It will be posted, and it will be on the board, and it'll be posted where it needs to be, and yes, it will be in the paper as well, we'll spend the extra money to make sure it's in the paper.
Yeah.
And we chose to do it on a Saturday morning at nine o'clock, so that anyone who can't drive in the evening can get there, people who work during the week can get there, so we're trying to make it as accessible and possible for everybody.
Make, ensure, because that's what happened last night, and people are still going, I didn't know we bought it back home.
People say that, though.
Oh, come on.
For all kinds of reasons. They, 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 they missed the move, got out of the plot. And, and...
All right, we have to legally have to have public, you have to have public participation.
If you add the two numbers.
We have to.
It is one-hundred-and-fifty-one, five-fifty.
That's why I'm saying, we got to move. So I motion, we go, I make a motion to go into public participation. Do I have a second? Oh, second. All in favor? All right. You got to stick around.
I just got a question, Brad, can you do the numbers so it comes out with one-fifty-one? Can you do the numbers so it comes out with one-fifty-one roughly?
Eighty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred. Is one-fifty-one, five-fifty?
That's for a Western star.
This is very tight, I told us to, to, to let people know about this, this isn't our job.
Okay, you know what, Martha?
I know you've got to cross the pick, but you don't do it daily, you pick on somebody and then you turn it on, and you don't hit like something.
Right back at you, Martha, because you know what, I've heard and heard and heard, you're out there saying the meeting's illegal. It is, that, that, that we're trying to buy two vehicles, so you know what, you're advertising just fine.
I didn't, where did I say that?
Well, you know what, people will come into you, do you think people don't come to you?
I haven't even been out, I've been in the hospital, so where was this coming from? That's bull.
Well, you better look at some of your so-called friends.
Who, who? I'm not even on Facebook, who?
No, I'm not getting into it, I'm just saying, I hear what goes on. Yes, ma'am. Yes. The old, the ninety-seven, you, you don't get it traded for that? No.
No, it's not traded. It wasn't, it wasn't worth fixing on it.
Your personal works will take anything that will work against either one of our other trucks off of that.
Done. Done, go ahead.
Would it be advisable at your next, at your public meeting, next meeting, to authorize sale of that old truck?
Scrap or whatever the heck we can get for it. Should we add that to that warrant then?
I would, yeah.
Okay, so we got to...
It's just a bone hammer, right?
Yes.
I have a question, are you getting a standard or an automatic in this new truck?
I'm sorry?
Standard, manual?
Can you run over that and ask her to add an article on it so that we can dispose that, the old truck, the ninety-seven? So we're going, she's going to have to add it, we're going to have to sign it again.
You know what? Just buy the old truck and two Sanders.
There we go, that's right.
Go on.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one in my mouth.
Karen?
I just want to say, I don't think there's anything wrong with having it spelled out year by year, you know, the amounts.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I don't disagree with you, I just don't know what that is right now. That's why I told Gail you guys can't vote on that tomorrow night, because I don't know.
Right.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, I motion to adjourn, because we've got a meeting to go to.
No, we can't.
Oh, shit, that's right, I sent you over there to do something. We want you to write exactly what you want on that, and then she'll redo it, so it's exactly the way you want to word it.
Have her put her two, um, um, Sanders in there, two.
Two. Do I say dispose, or do I say? Yeah, dispose?
Yep, we're not too bad.
Yeah.
I would say, put it out to bid.
Not dispose, because that's like too quick to handle.
Yeah.
So not trying to be half-bad. Oh, too bad, to put up too bad. George, put on the select board to...
To sell by bid.
To sell by bid, the nineteen-ninety-seven.
International. And two stainless steel Sanders.
Truck and two things.
And where do you want the funds to that, to go?
Steel Sanders.
Future equipment account that we already have established?
Let's see. Is to go into the, what's it called? Equipment account?
New equipment account established in the road department's budget.
That article was, I think, two years ago.
I think so, too.
I think it was two years ago.
Right, because we got rid of the road grader, the whole tractor.
The old farm all tractor, yeah. I think that was two years ago.
Yeah.
What's last, what's last year's warrant?
He sold, sold them when I was working here.
No, they said that, and they said that, they said that one's the one he uses in his office.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Having not seen all this, have in the past when we buy different pieces of equipment, is it past practice to always put the payments in for each of the financed years in?
Yeah, once we, once we know what they are, we can, yeah.
So, I just...
What happens is sometimes we know exactly what's being purchased, I mean, he knows the truck, if he, we've got the amount today, so now we can go to the bank, if it's what we want to borrow, what are our payments going to be, that's going to make it a lot easier. When it's a shot in the dark, like we had at first, we're looking for a truck, that we might spend this, we don't know what the payments are going to be. All that does is lock us and put them up that we can't go over.
Okay, but it's not a some, a policy that we consistently do on every piece of equipment that we purchase? Okay.
Right.
Because I'm hearing we did it on a chipper, but we didn't just do it on the backhoe type thing.
Correct.
So it's not something that needs to be done, it's just helpful to be...
Well, when you know.
To be more information out.
Correct, yeah.
I've heard that we always did that.
Huh? She'll bring it over as soon as she's done with it. Okay.
We've always done that, we've had it down to the penny, it wasn't much to everybody's imagination.
On every piece of equipment?
Yep.
You can, you can bring forth paperwork, black and white word, done that on every piece of equipment we've seen, because that's what I'd like to see, Martha, if you're stating that, I'd like you to back it.
It should, it should be done that way, then there's no question.
I agree, that if we can start doing that now, going forward, but she's saying it's always been that way, and I'd like her to back that statement.
It has been when we bought the truck, we don't purchase the truck.
Bring it the next meeting, love to look at it.
Yes, but we have to sign. Soon as she gets that third one on, we can sign it off.
It's all the common sense, you buy a vehicle, you know exactly what the payments are going to be.
Well, we will.
You're all set. Brad's all set.
Yeah.
Will you go now?
Can you go now? Have a good night, you too, Brad.
There you are, but the sand you put in, it helped.
I'm sorry?
The sand you put in, the deck all around, it was bumpy, and it has helped.
I know it's going to be better on Ridge Road.
Oh, it is, it is.
I was going to say, I was going to say...
Yeah, it gets sand and rocks under my car now.
And it goes so fat.
It doesn't, it doesn't do any good.
There was no sand in it yesterday.
Well, it does get that, it tells us where the bumps are, so it tells us where the small...
It also does take the big dip out.
Right.
That's what I was saying, hey, how'd you know?
After the nice, cute dip.
Drive on the other side.
I mean, every day, we're going to find some more.
When the frost is gone, hopefully some.
Yeah, hopefully. We got to think of what the, on Ridge Road, that's... I think it would get, on Ridge Road, that's a terrible shape. There's gotta be a spring on anything. That, not on Valley Road, there's gotta be a spring on Valley Road too.
I think the, that piece of dick rail that you're gonna, yeah.
I'm sorry?
That piece on the dick railroads, you're gonna rebuild this year?
Yes, yeah, that's the last section.
I think left hand side with that ledger, you're gonna find a spring in there too, I think.
We're gonna have to put an under drain there.
Yep.
To keep it from coming back into the road.
Yep.
That worked out down on East Shore Road, we put a hundred and eighty foot under drain. Where it used to run at the Diagon's basement.
Yeah.
It took all these two years now, taking me to death, cause there's no more water in the street.
You're registered to vote.
There was always some water line out there. Couple places watered.
I moved so many times. Well, you're gonna want the...
I got a pen back, it's gonna take a lot of time to steal it. Thank you.
Come on, come on, come on.
I'm not... Make sure that they minus the five thousand.
Yes.
Because on that was figured, there's not.
I'll get on that tomorrow.
Just making a suggestion, don't fight my head off.
Mine might.
I, this is not...
She did say she wouldn't have time to swear my name before tomorrow night's meeting. Because she's gonna be with the open vote office tomorrow.
Oh, that's a funny, yeah.
She didn't wanna do it tonight.
Well, she's, I'm gonna take care of that tomorrow.
I'm telling you. That was brought to my attention, that she would have to have my name tomorrow. Yeah, it looks pretty sharp.
Well, that's a technical, it takes two minutes.
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, I was going for the two minutes, but...
Yes. We, we appointed him tonight, so all he needs to do is run in, so, yeah, he can be there tomorrow.
Lady coming through?
Lady coming through.
Hey, Deb, it's very important that Mike is, I know it's your election day and everything tomorrow, but it's important that he's on in.
Is he here?
No, tomorrow, he's gonna have to stop at some point in two seconds and get, raise his hand and say his thing.
What, is it for me, please?
Yeah. Thank you.
To my desk.
Will you sort it?
I was. Just checking.
Lost my brain for another three. Lost my brain for another three. Really?
Sometimes you just have to. You have to know what you're gonna confront.
Yep.
And you could have gotten a CS tomorrow, and she'd have said that, and you'd have lost off, and you wouldn't have been able to...
That's right, so...
And then when do you fill in, do you hand fill in, do you finance, can you...
Yeah, she'll, she'll add it on.
Who, uh, who's on on the finance, thank you, sir?
Bell's set down.
Bell's gone down, yeah. And consequently, what did this...
At first you hear a woo to them.
So you either put the five thousand dollar deposit somewhere.
It was made well.
That's right.
That's gonna, the Article twelve, the five thousand dollars.
Yes, cause the first payment will be five thousand dollars, keep her.
Yeah, but it is, is it gonna be worth it, five thousand dollars? I think that's what you're asking. There won't be like, these are what the payments are, so you won't see that five thousand. So are you asking that the five will show this amount, less the five thousand equals these three payments?
Yeah.
That's how you're saying it, I don't see why we can't do that.
Okay, alright, I make a motion adjourn. Yeah. I, there's a reason, I can't...